We could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moment of silence. Thank you. Before we adopt the agenda, there's one item that I'm hoping we can help VDOT out with, and they are on Presentations under O, which is after Public Comment. I'm wondering if we can either make them in, or, and I don't know if it's loud, could we put them before public hearing?
You can put them anyplace you'd like.
I like that.
So this is an evening session?
Correct.
I guess if we're looking for a motion, I would make a motion that we adopt the agenda, understanding that the addendum item that we received late yesterday is for information only, and that is the only addendum item. And then the rumble public hearing for this evening has been withdrawn. And then the VDOT quarterly update would follow immediately after M2, the public hearing for the VDOT secondary six-year plan.
Great, I have a motion.
Hold on a second.
A motion, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right, going right into Presentations. Dr. Grimsley with the school report.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board of Supervisors. Happy Spring from your friends at RCPS. We are in the final countdown, and so much is going on in the life of our school community. This is an extremely busy time of year. End-of-year assessments are beginning, and we are excited for our students to show what they know. They have worked very hard this year, and I am sure their end-of-year projects, assessments, and SOLs will certainly indicate that hard work. And don't forget to thank a teacher this week. It is Teacher Appreciation Week, and of course, all of their hard work is what we see in the student outcomes. This is also the time of year where we celebrate successes. We have included a calendar of our end-of-year events, in case you are interested in attending any of them, including awards ceremonies, sports activities, and more. Of course, we welcome our friends on the board to join us for graduation on May 24th at 7:00 p.m. So just let us know that if that's confirmed, and we will make sure you have seating. We have a very busy summer planned, especially with the new SPARC program, Summer Program for Adventure, Recreation, and Knowledge. Beginning in just a few short weeks, where we will offer summer slide support, enrichment, field trips, camp excursions, and fun activities all summer long, five days a week. Thanks to a special collaboration between RCPS, CCLC, Headwaters, and 4H, we were able to develop this program. Within only two weeks of opening up the program for registration, all slots were filled with over 130 student applications, and over 50 applicants for teens who wanted to be counselors. This will be our first year of piloting this program, and so far has been very well received. We will also, again, offer the Pathways Academy, a six-week summer program, providing in-depth career exploration activities for students to participate in job shadowing, advisement from successful business professionals, financial skills workshops, and field trips. Thanks to grants received for this program, all 20 juniors or seniors who are accepted into the program also receive a $1,000 stipend, $100 to invest as part of an exercise, and $100 to purchase clothing for a professional interview. This program is now in its third year, and has been extremely successful, not only for the students, but also for our business partners who work with our students. Finally, thank you so very much for considering approving a budget supporting the majority of the RCPS request. This will enable us to issue contracts solidifying our workforce, as well as help us recruit for our known vacancies. We appreciate your continued support so much. Thank you.
Dr. Grimsley, thanks a lot, and I know it's a relief that we're not going back and forth on budget-related minutia, but I do want to acknowledge your hard work, and the hard work of Ms. Witt, in helping us get to a point where I think we can credibly say to our constituents that both the school board and the school administration and our board have done our best to fund the schools appropriately while protecting taxpayers against undue pressure. Since it is Teacher Appreciation Week, I'll use the opportunity to say that I hope that the nearly $10 million in funding that will come out of our general fund for school operations, which is more than 65% of our local tax dollars, local real property tax dollars, personal property tax dollars, I do hope that that money, or whatever additional funds, we're contributing above and beyond what we did in FY '24, to the extent possible, will be directed toward recruiting the best teachers and retaining the best teachers that we possibly can. Dr. Mills, Chair Donahue, and I met, and that was certainly the main focus of our conversation. How do we compete in an already tough market as a small locality? So as you think about the steady funding increases since FY '23, from 8.9 to 9.4, and now $9.95 million, I trust that you will keep your eye on the teacher retention recruitment question in the context of steadily increasing funding for the schools, because I think that's critical.
I really appreciate you saying that, and that is one of our top eight priorities in our strategic plan. Absolutely. You can't have successful students without the highest-quality educators, and that's something we try to support so much, so thank you.
That's a good question. So you've got these summer programs running. Do they start when, just right after graduation, all the way up till when school? Or did you say six weeks?
Absolutely. So it's, no, this is the first time we've done this, but it's full day, all summer long, starting right after we're out of school. So that very next week, we're rolling, so.
And is it going to take place at both schools?
So it'll take place primarily on campus, okay, in June, at the elementary school, Monday through Wednesday. Thursdays is a field trip day, Fridays at the 4H Center in June. In July, it's primarily at Graves Mountain Lodge, with other days as field trip days, and Fridays at 4H.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, it's going to be a really fun program.
That's great.
A lot of moving parts. It's coming together.
That's great. Thanks.
I had an opportunity to have lunch at the Laurel Ridge Education Foundation Appreciation Luncheon, and two young gentlemen, both of which were from Chester Gap. I looked at them, and I said, you know, how do you think the Repahanic School System does? And they said, it was excellent. They took care of us, the teachers cared about us, and I thought that was very important for you to hear that.
Thank you very much. There's nothing more powerful than the words of our students that tell us about that, so thank you. Appreciate that.
And thank your teachers.
I will.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, Company Four, monthly presentation.
Thank you. I have our numbers and then two comments, if it's not out of order. In April, there were 12 EMS calls. We got out on six of them. There were three fire calls, and we got out on one of them that involved seven different people. So it was not all one person. We continue to have irregularities with our reporting. There were three calls that we didn't get a run sheet on from dispatch, and we didn't know how to count those, so we just included them as non-responsive calls. And then I took one myself on a personal phone call from a friend at the end of the month, convinced her that she needed to go to the hospital. She refused to allow me to call an ambulance, and we realized that what I should have done was call dispatch, since I was operating in my Flint Hill capacity. We were proud to be able to participate with the other companies in the county in the mass casualty exercise at the school Friday a week ago. Right before prom. And I've done a lot of mass casualty exercises, both with military and with the civilian side in emergency medicine, and this was one of the best-run, most elaborate, most profoundly affecting exercises that I've ever seen, thanks to Cat Waters, who put that together for us. I know you may have seen in the paper that we had a helicopter, we even had a hearse. And yeah, Erin Platt, who is one of our local actresses, played the mother of the dead child, and was so profoundly affecting that there was not a single snarky comment or grimace from any of these high school kids. I mean, they were, it was profoundly affecting to all of us. And then, on personal note, I want to say that since starting to do this, I have read and talked with people about what's going on nationwide with volunteer fire departments and volunteer rescue squads. And I think it's an inevitable result of well-intentioned people ratcheting up the requirements, the education, the reporting, the supervision, the oversight, that's making it harder and harder for volunteers to keep up and to do this sort of stuff. And it's helped me to put a human face on some of the grumbling and some of the fierce criticism that we've endured as appointed board members. And I understand it now a little better in that context. So I want to especially thank the county for supporting the volunteers. I mean, this is our, we can't possibly serve the county without the volunteer service, and the support we've gotten and the approach you guys are taking with trying to support volunteerism, I feel like it's just right. It's just what we need here, and that's in a national context. So, questions? Oh, I almost forgot the most important thing. We're having a cornhole tournament next Saturday. Please come.
I know I ask every month, but for your responses, it was 12 and six, and how many transports?
I think we got one transport in April, just only one.
Thank you.
Ms. Smith, sorry.
Dr. Hill, I guess my question is, what do you, we appreciate these monthly updates. Looking at the EMT class of which you're a part, which is obviously going to be a big boost in terms of your volunteer staffing on the EMS front. I had the pleasure of attending recently one of your classes, and it is absolutely impressive and inspiring all at once. And I really thank all of you for sacrificing Saturdays and weekends and et cetera to get that done, because it's really important. And I think that that batch of new volunteers will really breathe life into the company. My question in that context is, if you were just thinking ahead, six months from now, we'll just make it easy, we'll say at our December meeting, wrapping up the year, where do you foresee Flint Hill, Company Four standing at that time in terms of staffing and responsiveness to calls in your call box, financial condition, et cetera? What are you all thinking about in the next six months, and what should we expect to see?
Well, that's wish thinking, I acknowledge, but I have realistic hopes that by then, most hours of most days, we'll have somebody in the station, on duty, on call, and able to respond instantaneously to a call, not having to come into the station from home. So we're going to get more responses, we're going to get out quicker. And as we have these trained people, you know, we've got a paramedic that we just, is going to take her for examination in July. We're going to have, hopefully, more opportunities to do transports. We just voted in a new member who's fully certified in all fire conditions this month, and so I anticipate that we will be more responsive and in better position to take care of fires as well. We've got seven people in the EMT class that were made EMRs. Out of the 10 EMR class members, we got all seven of the Flint Hill people past that and are now in the EMT class. Two people, one from Castleton and one from Chester Gap, are also hanging in there. And I attended a Fauquier County EMS committee meeting this last week and learned that they've had a lot of trouble getting people through the national exams. This is part of why I said what I did about the rising standards. One company was complaining that they'd had 10 students and only three of them passed the test, and they've been doing root cause analyses and trying to figure out what it is. So I'm in awe of my classmates. They are, for me and for our nurse practitioner and our paramedic, this is a review, but for them, it's new, unfamiliar, and it's just amazing. So we have more mature people, right? We need some younger people, and hopefully, some of that will come from the high school program that Cat's doing. But the trade-off there is the commitment's more serious, I think, and they're more likely to hang in. Is that responsive?
No, yeah, thank you.
I don't want to guarantee we'll be out on 100% of the calls, but we'll be doing better.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hill.
All right, now we have People Inc., Mr. Phipps.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
That mic, there's a little grip right there. If you squeeze it, it should go better.
Fancy, that's a little bit better. Thank you. Good afternoon, my name is Brian Phipps. I am the President and CEO of People Incorporated of Virginia. I am here at the urging of one of our board members, Dr. Missy Brown-Crick, with the Repahanic County Department of Social Services. And she asked, and in speaking with Mr. Curry, thought it would be good to come and update the Board of Supervisors on People Incorporated's activities within your county. People Incorporated is a special kind of nonprofit organization that's known as a community action agency. Community action started back in the mid-1960s as an initiative to equip local communities with initiatives to help alleviate the causes and symptoms of poverty. It's a very broad charge, and one that we have been doing for 60 years now. People Incorporated is celebrating its 60th anniversary this year. Much of our history has been spent in the southwest portion of the state, but in 2008, 2009, following the economic recession, we began expanding our services into additional communities throughout Virginia, particularly to communities that did not then have access to a community action agency. Community action agencies are a little bit different, as I mentioned. You know, many nonprofits will focus on perhaps one or two specific issue areas. People Incorporated, in comparison, really focuses on providing holistic services within communities where there is a need and a demand for their services. So rather than coming into communities and seeking to compete with other resources that are available, our specialty is really in figuring out where do the gaps lie in terms of the types of services that are needed for local residents. We've got about 270 employees, around a $30 million annual budget, give or take, and serve now 17 counties and cities throughout the Commonwealth. Next slide, please. I mentioned, of course, that it is our 60th birthday. If you move on to the next slide, I would like to mention, and I saw Dr. Grimsley a few minutes ago, one of the things that People Incorporated does annually is to award, to make awards from our Board of Directors, that really seek to recognize outstanding contributions from individuals whose job it is to serve local communities, but also whose passion it is to volunteer in service to their communities. And I'm pleased to report that this year's recipient of our Garland Thayer Award, which really targets individuals who, in their formal employment capacity, does so, we recognized Dr. Grimsley this year for her contributions, certainly within Repahanic County. These nominations are open throughout our service area, and we were very pleased to have the opportunity to do that. Following closely, and it is, it was certainly interesting to me, I was able to make good use of our time as we were up here, but the volunteer organization and group that we recognized this year was Dr. Noel Lang of the Repahanic County Food Bank. So, you know, certainly, I can see the community-mindedness here within the community, certainly, and we were very pleased, as an organization, to be able to highlight some of the contributions that have been made by your local residents. Next slide, please. There's Dr. Lang during our presentation to them. So, you know, as I mentioned, you know, our mission is really to provide opportunities to move economically disadvantaged individuals into the economic mainstream. We do this with understanding that, as a philosophy, all of the individuals we serve have dignity, and we really seek to find ways to assist each of those participants in our programs in a way that certainly helps them to achieve their goals. This is not a situation where we come and say, you should do X, Y, and Z, but certainly focus on what are the inherent strengths of that family, and how can we help you capitalize on the resources and opportunities you have in a way that you're able to really advance and meet your own goals. So it's really our role to be a facilitator, in many ways, through the different programs and services that we provide. And if you'd like to move on a couple of slides, please, that'd be great. Go ahead, please. So our service region is a bit interesting, and on the next slide, we can see that we have what I call a bifurcated service area in some ways. Certainly, Repahanic County is one of the communities that we serve, but really started our expansion a number of years ago in Page and Shenandoah County, and have steadily expanded up through the valley to Fauquier and Culpeper to our south, and greater Prince William County beyond that. Next slide, please. And again, you know, if, between, you know, our service region here and the one that we have in southwest Virginia, is about four and a half hours of Interstate 81. And I owe you all an apology, I was supposed to be here at your last meeting, got outside of Harrisonburg, and there was a wreck where cattle got loose on the interstate, and I sat there for two hours. Unfortunately, I missed your meeting and was frantically texting while I had service that I was not going to make it. But, you know, really, while distance is certainly a challenge for us, one of the things that we really pride ourselves on is to not let that distance stop us, certainly not to have it prevent us from engaging with local communities. So, you know, while we spend a lot of time on the road, you know, certainly me and my staff do, you know, we do not consider that to be a hindrance at all, it's just a part of the job in our work within the communities that we serve. We can continue on. In terms of programs and services that we have available here in Repahanic County, I think one of the things we are best known for, certainly throughout the state, is for affordable housing development. People Incorporated has been the sponsor and developer for over 1,100 affordable housing units over the last 15 years or so. There are 15, or upwards of 30, different properties that we own and manage throughout much of Virginia and into Upper East Tennessee. You know, in terms of the impact and what we really try to focus on, it's on individuals and families that make 60% or less than the area median income. That is where much of our affordable housing focus is really targeted, rather than looking at, you know, extremely low income or what we would call upper income or middle income. That has historically been the case, but I think as we engage with local communities, one of the things that we're hearing more and more about is the desperate need for affordable housing across income levels. It's certainly not focused on any one group of residents within our communities, but in a much broader context now to where people, you know, that make our local workforce and people that are, could be considered upper-middle income in many of the communities that we serve are also having difficulty finding accessible housing options. So People Inc. has worked for many years, not only on developing multifamily housing, but also with supporting first-time homebuyers and single-family homeownership, many emergency-based services such as permanent supportive housing for households that are experiencing instances of homelessness and unhoused. So we are very active across the board when it comes to housing. Next slide, please. There's just some data I'll leave that you can take a few moments, hopefully, and take a closer look at in terms of our impact in the communities that we serve. Next, please. One of the housing properties that we just recently completed, actually in the fall of last year, was a 52-unit development in the town of Loray, across the mountain here in Page County. I'm pleased to report, you know, this project was a result of a multi-year effort with the town of Loray, who assisted us with accessing some community development block grant funds to install the infrastructure on this site. And, you know, certainly, Page County is remote, much like Repahanic County, and one of the questions we fielded always as we were going through developing this project is, you know, do you think people will come? Will they be interested in your housing? And we opened the property in the fall of 2021 and leased up all 52 units in that development within two months. And we currently have a waiting list of over 200 people waiting to access housing within that property itself. That's very consistent with the impact that we see in other communities. So as you think and as you deliberate about the future of the county in general, we are seeing a very strong demand for quality housing options. And, you know, that's not limited to any one community, it's just the tone and tenor of many of the conversations that we're having within communities right now. Next slide, please. We also, we are also very heavily engaged in community economic development. People Incorporated is what is known as a community development financial institution. So we are actually a lender to small businesses and consumers within the communities that we serve. As a CDFI, we aren't regulated as a traditional bank would be, but really focus on providing loan funds and loan capital to businesses that can't necessarily go to a bank and get a loan. We want to work with them to improve their business acumen, to help them with developing a business plan, and then to extend them capital so that they can start their business and create jobs. We also know, due to the unavailability, in many cases, of short-term affordable financing options, that many consumers are forced to go to payday lenders or to title lenders to meet their short-term financial needs. And in response to that, we began making loans to individuals as a means for them to access credit that is a little more friendly than what's available in the market. And, you know, we have seen so many different needs come to us, whether it's to help people prevent foreclosure, to help them consolidate debt, to help them take care of medical judgments and unplanned bills. It's been a very flexible but popular tool in many of the communities that we serve. So that's an additional resource that I know we've worked with some businesses here in Repahanic County and individuals as well over the last years. One of the things that we just started doing, I'm glad that I saw that, is a matched savings account program, which is called RISE. We are administering that program in collaboration with the Virginia Department of Social Services. And through that program, we are able to offer TANF recipients and TANF participants in Department of Social Services programs with the opportunity to match their savings at a rate of eight to one. So, you know, if they save $25, then, you know, we are matching that, you know, up to $400 to a total of $8,000 over the course of their savings period. Those funds are really intended to help them with meet their own financial needs, whether it be to purchase a home, to start a business, to continue their education, or to do other things that will help them to live more self-sufficiently. This is a very new initiative, it's a pilot initiative that only four organizations like People Inc. are administering throughout the state, and we're very pleased to be able to offer that in Repahanic, as well as some additional counties throughout our service area. Next page, please. We can skip that one. Community services, which comprises a very large part of what People Inc. does in many communities, but here in Repahanic County, we've been very active for years offering the Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program. I'm not surprised, as I've gotten to know this community well, that volunteerism is very strong here, and one of the best sites that we have for that free income tax preparation is right here in Repahanic County. We've got some folks that have been working with us for a long time through that program, and we've been able to continue that over the past few years. Next slide, please. Housing services, I mentioned our development capacity, but one of the things that we do on behalf of some other local nonprofits here is to administer the Permanent Supportive Housing Program for the Foothills Housing Network. So we are working with groups like CHAZ in Culpeper and other groups that are really focused on, you know, providing, you know, short-term emergency financial assistance and housing for individuals to prevent them from becoming homeless. So that was an opportunity for us to not only help with the administration of that program, but also to develop a scattered-site program where we're working with landlords to actually place chronically homeless individuals in their homes, to make sure that they have access to the case management services that they need to be. access to the case management services that they need to be stabilized and successful as they're moving forward. Next slide, please. One of the interesting approaches that we've also developed and are using with each of the different types of programs that we operate is what we call a whole-family approach, which is really akin to a second-generation approach to working with families. And the idea behind this is to not only work with young children, for instance, but also work with their parents as a means to really help that family emerge from the cycle of poverty that is impacting them. So, you know, the traditional model is, you know, whether it be Head Start, childcare, those types of things, you would be focused on the child predominantly. This really seeks to couple those two philosophies in a way that not only provides early childhood education services for the young children, but also works with the family on identifying employment goals that they may have, or figuring out what do they need to do to really be successful and to be able to make progress and really get out of that cycle that impacts too many of the individuals that we serve. Next slide, please. So, you know, in terms of, you know, who we serve primarily, you know, the vast majority of the individuals enrolled in our programs are one hundred and fifty percent or less than the federal poverty level, which is very low, as many of you all know. We do have occasion in some of our programs, especially with the small business development and some of the other workforce development things that we're doing, to serve families on a case-by-case basis outside of that income level. But from People Incorporated's perspective, we are really targeting our services to the most vulnerable citizens within Repahanack and other communities that we serve. I think, if I'm not mistaken, that's likely the end of the presentation. So happy to answer any questions, but thank you all for giving me an opportunity to update you on People Inc. and our programs.
So I have a question.
Sure.
Once upon a time, People Inc., you had, I believe it was Jenny Knox, at the Met Center.
Yep.
I know she has moved on. Who is the new current person? And how do our citizens access? If I'm in workforce and I find some of it confusing, like a lot of overlapping services, so I'm thinking, if it's my world and I find it confusing, how do we help our residents navigate that?
Absolutely agree. There are a lot of cooks in the kitchen, is how I would characterize it. We are going through the process right now of hiring a lender that will be housed out of Culpeper, that is essentially taking Jenny's position. You may know, our current Director of Community Economic Development is Stephanie Lillard. She used to work at Page County and Shenandoah County for a while. But we, I noticed something Dr. Grinfly said a few minutes ago that really resonated with me. We are working through right now on our next five-year strategic plan. And one of the areas of need that we have identified is frankly to dispel some of the confusion within the communities that we're working in and to do a better job of engaging with local communities and being able to say, this is who you need to contact for our services. And so I absolutely hear what you're saying, and that's in progress. But one of our really focus areas moving forward is to, especially with community economic development and workforce, some things that we do is to get more engagement with those local networks because we know they're everywhere.
So they're going to be located in Culpeper?
Yes.
Okay, so the stats that you've shared with us today, do you know how many of them? Can you tease out the Repahanack, and I don't expect you to do it now, but can you tease out the Repahanack numbers for us? Just shoot us an email or something?
Absolutely.
I'd be really curious, you know, how many of our residents are accessing those, especially with transportation being a barrier for the very population we're speaking about.
I certainly can do that. You know, I will tell you that it's not, the number's not big. You know, we have seen that particularly in some of the more isolated communities that we serve. But, you know, I think that was really the impetus behind us saying, you know, this is an issue. We need to make sure that we're getting more well-established in all the communities that we're serving. So certainly we'll share that information, but again, we know first off that we have work to do as we work towards.
Thanks a lot. I have three questions.
Sure.
One, tell me about your funding structure. You operate on a thirty million dollar budget. Can you just summarize for us your funding sources?
Sure. We are about fifty percent federal, state, local grant-funded and fifty percent generated revenue. So we earn income from a lot of our development activities.
Okay, great. And what's your background? I was just curious what you bring to the organization. Are you?
I was a history major.
Okay.
No, you know, truly, I grew up in the coalfields. When I got, when I got out of college, started working for the local Head Start organization. I was recruited somewhat to the agency then, learned development. My, you know, activities before I came presidency, I were really focused on organizational development, strategic planning, and development activities. So looking at housing development, community development, lending, those types of things.
Now, are you from southwest Virginia?
I am.
And is that why that's also within your territory? Or is that just, is that a legacy?
It's been there since sixty years. The agency started there sixty years ago, and, you know, I, growing up, I didn't know what People Incorporated was, you know, went to school locally, got out and said, I need a job, like so many people, and did not really know what I wanted to do when I grew up. And fortunately got into this work. So it's been very beneficial for me personally going forward. But yeah, I mean, I was, one thing I tell people, you know, when you say that you're going to, you know, pursue history, they say, wow, are you going to teach? And my answer was always no. And they said, well, what are you going to do? And I said, I have no idea. But, you know, one of the things that I have learned going through this is that one thing that humanities in general, but certainly history and political science do is it teaches you how to learn, to find information, to research, and to write, and to communicate. And those are some of the very important things that we do on a daily basis, especially as nonprofits. It's always figure out what the answer is and learn how to shoot trouble and, you know, figure out the best way forward. And, you know, I found my skills have been pretty consistent with that.
And then who is your immediate predecessor?
Rob Goldsmith.
Okay. So my third question is similar to one I asked him, but perhaps I asked in a different way. A fifty-two unit housing development does not Repahanack County make?
Absolutely.
Never hear?
Yep.
Never. However, there is certainly plenty of talk about the need for affordable housing. And one property that I've watched and I've discussed with Supervisor Comer, because she has a lot of ties to the Warrenton area, is a project that I believe the Foothills Housing, Housing?
Network.
Network, thank you. I was going to say forum, but that's a different Foothills. Housing Network, this is, it's called the Old Ben &amp; Mary Steakhouse on seventeen outside of Warrenton. And when I look at that, and I said it to Patrick Monty from the Regional Commission, when I look at that, I think that's what we should be doing in Repahanack County. And so my question to you is, are you nimble enough to not do fifty-two unit developments, but perhaps small renovations of old dilapidated, otherwise not occupied properties? Because that kind of incremental addition of housing in our community in numbers that make sense for a county whose population has not changed in a hundred and twenty years makes sense. And if that's something that can contribute to your revenue generating side of your thirty million dollar budget, we'd be interested. But we wouldn't be interested in a fifty-two unit development.
I completely understand and agree. You know, you have to make sure that anytime you're doing development work, that it makes sense for the market that you're in. I will tell you that we have done projects with as few as twelve units in them. We've done fourteen units in Toms Brook when we renovated the old Toms Brook School there. So it absolutely is possible. I would be remiss if I didn't say it wasn't more challenging, just certainly because there's fewer units to produce income to keep the property operating. That said, we would absolutely love to come to the table to try to figure things out. I think especially when you start thinking about mixed-use projects and some other things within communities, one of the challenges usually is finding a place that makes sense, you know, certainly from a zoning perspective. But, you know, I think working closely is the way that you address some of those issues on the front end, and then we can be free to do the work that we know how to do. So yes, sir, absolutely.
And People Inc. brought forward the proposition or the proposal for the schoolhouse here in the town of Washington at one point.
We did at one point.
Was to be nine to ten units.
Yeah, we did. I don't think, we didn't go across the finish line, but we said.
You know, sometimes it's about the lesson you learn.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely.
Are you all doing the one that's in Front Royal now? I think it was an old quality motel?
We're not, we're not doing that one. Actually, one that we're working on, and it's really, you know, a different scale of what we were doing Repahanack County, but we're getting ready to kick off a sixty-unit development in Culpeper. That should break ground here very soon. But, you know, are very interested, we've been talking with Warren County as well about some potential opportunities that they have there to do those. And I, you know, to your point, Supervisor Whitson, I do think that the answer is figuring out, how can you do these smaller projects in a way that makes sense for communities? I mean, we certainly do not view this as a money-making venture, but we've got to make sure that they're stabilized enough to be able to be self-sufficient.
I think the principle for us, or at least for me, is make use of what we already have. And I can drive down my road and point out two or three properties that.
So you can do it, yeah.
For decades.
Yeah, no, absolutely, I agree. And we've done a lot of what we call that adaptive reuse, taking a building and trying to preserve it and change it for future use. And that's a very, a very practical approach.
Yeah, sure.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very good presentation. Thank you.
All right, Mr. LaGrasse.
You're a good communicator.
Thank you.
That school paid off.
That's Thomas Bryan.
Encompass community supports, Mr. LaGrasse.
Thank you. I appreciate being here today. I was actually, again, like Brian was asked to talk a little bit about our ask of the county this year, because it is a fairly substantial increase over previous years. And I think it can be confusing as to how our asks get developed. And so for members of the board who are new, I think I know everybody, but I don't think I ever met you before I got here, Jim LaGrasse with Encompass Community Supports. So our ask is actually based on a formulary on the amount of state general funds we receive as well as federal funds. When we receive those funds, there are required local matches. And for a variety of reasons during the pandemic, when new funds were coming in, our rates remained fairly consistent to our five counties. And so this year is kind of that catch-up year. We saw a very significant increase in state general funds, about a little over five million dollars, which is really what caused the large increase this year. And our funding increases then are all based on your proportion of the population of our service areas. We are a five-county service area, you're four point one percent of our population, thus the approximately twenty thousand dollar cost increase. And those increased funds this year really went into a couple, I think, of really key areas. The first one was, it really allowed us to recruit and retain employees during the pandemic. We were very fortunate, and I will say this, we, our organization currently, right now from the availability of licensed clinician, professional staff are in a very, very good position because we have been able, over the last few years, to take state general funds and raise licensed clinician salary so that we've been able to fill positions, which has really helped to increase the services that we're able to provide to our communities. Additionally, we've seen increased programs and services. You know, for example, if we look at, we became a Marcus Alert, what's the, one of the first, whatever that word is, sites, but really helped us to do some extra work with law enforcement. It helped us to create the Sea Recovery Center, some of those other types of programs, but those are state general funds that obviously need support. I think as we look forward, I think it's really also very critical to know that our organization just implemented a brand-new strategic plan on July first. And I think what really hits with some of our communities is the first strategic objective of our organization is to increase access to our services. And as we look at over the last few years, one of our goals is to have a very strong presence in all of the five communities that we support. And I know that's been a big challenge here in Repahanack. You know, before I was here, I know we did have a physical site. We've worked really hard, frankly, the last couple of years to try to find a physical site here in Repahanack County that made sense. We are a small population, you think you all know I'm a Repahanack resident. It's a very small population base, so something that does make sense but still brings services to our community. So when we're looking at increasing access, we are looking at a physical presence in all locations. I also think just as critically important, we are really looking at new technologies and how can we bring services to our counties, especially our less populated counties, through the increase of technologies and spending a lot of work and resources in that regard as well. The second significant goal, I think, in our strategic plan was, when we started the strategic plan, we sent out surveys, I think to over a thousand community members. We invited about a hundred community members to be part of focus groups, and we did, actually did twenty-five targeted interviews, I don't think Gary might have been one of those interviews over the time, to really talk about how we can better serve our community. And like I said, access was number one, awareness was number two, that people were not aware of all the services and supports that we could provide to our community. I think at last count, we had over eighty separate and distinct programs and services that we offer. So there's a lot out there, and people just didn't know what was available to them. And so a lot of work really going into community awareness, whether it's presence at events and those types of things, the rebranding of the organization to encompass community supports. It was really a very strategic move. One of the reasons we knew that people don't come to us is because of stigma, stigma being the biggest barrier to treatment and support. And we're really hopeful that the new name of the organization allows people to kind of cross that barrier, right? Repahanack Rapid, and we are a public body organization. If you're struggling with a substance use disorder or something like that, the place you probably don't want to go is to the political body for that. So the, you know, the idea of the Encompass Community Supports is to make us much more accessible. And then along with that, the rebranding, just to make people aware of what we are and what we can do. The next goal we have is to increase capacity, just to continue to bring more supports and services to our community. We will very soon be rolling out mobile crisis in our community. We just received funding and support from the Department of Behavioral Health to have local mobile crisis teams, which will hopefully lessen the burden on law enforcement. That is a team that will go out, respond to people in our community or having a behavioral health crisis before law enforcement needs to be called. We also are rolling out soon, and we just received funding from the Opioid Abatement Authority for an opioid overdose response team. So if members of our community experience an overdose, we have a team that when first responders come to that team, they can call us. If we have staff on duty at that particular time, we can come out. If not, we will make a visit to those individuals on the next day, because we know if we can get resources to people who are struggling, the sooner we get resources and information and make connections to those individuals, the much more likely we are to give them help and treatment and support in the long run. And although the Health Department will be mad at me for sharing, at this point in time, we are seeing locally really significant reductions. I have a disclaimer. These are unofficial results that the chief medical officer or exam, medical examiner has not made them official yet. But just for comparison, in our five-county area, in 2020, our region, I want to make sure I get the right numbers here, had forty-four fatal overdoses. That's really when we started seeing the real heavy hit of fentanyls. In 2021, we saw fifty-nine. In 2022, we saw a slight reduction to fifty-six. Preliminary numbers for last year were ten.
Wow.
So we have seen similar results in the number of people who have seen ER for overdose-related visits, where we were historically, as a region, higher than the state average. We are now significantly below, and we are going down. So the expansion of the services and supports, one of my challenges, I'll be honest with you, is I can report on Repahanack numbers. We typically do it in the fall, so I don't have year-end numbers for you at this point in time. But one of the things that we have found is the more we can have services that are stigma-free and barrier-free, the more likely we are, the people, to come through our door and receive help and support. And so reporting, if it's stigma-free, barrier-free, it's probably anonymous. So sometimes getting some of that information for us has been really, really tricky. But again, we know we are seeing people from Repahanack County. We have peer teams that are now coming out and meeting with people in Repahanack County. We have people from this area who are going to our Sea Recovery Center, which is an anonymous program. which is an anonymous program. And I think we're seeing some really significant results. So, you know, I can go on and on and on because I can do that. But if there's questions, I'd be happy to answer questions.
On the fentanyl overdose decline, which is really remarkable, and this is not to take anything away from your counseling services that you provide, but how much of that do we think is attributable to the fact that you can, you can now walk into Harris Teeter Pharmacy and grab one of the whatever their...
I think it's a combination of tons of stuff, right? I think it's the flooding the market with fentanyl, or with Narcan.
Narcan, thank you.
Not flooding, we don't have to flood the market with fentanyl, that'd be bad. Yes, flooding the market with Narcan, working with first responders, the Health Department, we do lots of revive trainings, Narcan trainings all over the place, so that this becomes the norm, right? And that's really how we turn this ship. Even, you know, I've been here six years. When I first started, people started, law enforcement started having Narcan, but there was still some great resistance, right? So continuing to work with first responders, law enforcement. Now, there's not a member who's a first responder or law enforcement who doesn't have it in their pocket all the time. So changing that mentality. We have, we now dispense fentanyl test strips and have distributed over 4,000 harm reduction kits. The harm reduction kits have Narcan, but they also have test strips. So we know and we've heard that, you know, people will test. Again, we're not endorsing use, but we know if people test and test positive, then they will change their usage patterns. What we also know is if they start to test, they keep coming back to us. And the more they come back to us, the more likely we are to be able to make connections, whether through peer supports or other types of services. I bring up the C Recovery Center because one of the things that we know is it's anonymous when people come in. Within six months, we have found we're able to get about 70% of those individuals to accept treatment. So our goal is to keep people alive, whether it's Narcan, whether it's fentanyl test strips, whether it's other types of methods, to the point where they come to a point where they're able to get treatment and those types of things.
So I actually, I had that same question. But another question that I have, are you seeing an age trend? So I'd be curious to see if educational efforts are, you know, if we're seeing this in older folks who maybe established some bad habits early on. I'd like, in those numbers, I'd also like to see the numbers of the ages.
So, yeah, I mean, I'd have to, they're Health Department numbers, so I can talk to the Health Department and see if they have that level of breakdown of information for you? Yeah, it'd be very interesting, yeah.
I'm just curious.
No, no, I think it's, well, I mean, it's if we look at what we know about youth in particular, you know, I have some very big concerns, frankly, with our youth mental health, the incidence of vaping and stuff like that. And I think we are creating a potential tsunami of problems for kids that we need to figure out better avenues. So it'd be interesting to see, is it a younger, is it skewing older, or what is happening with the kids? I think it would be very interesting.
So I think you now have a physical presence in every county except Rappahannock.
Well, we have a small one here. You know, we are using CCLC. We have some of our children's services that are working out of the Childcare Learning Center here locally. We have the ability occasionally, case management, and those types of people can meet there. We've also built what's called a PCIT room, parent-child interactive therapy, which is an evidence-based practice, kind of a unique model, kind of a really cool program that helps families that are struggling with kids. But I would say, I bet we've looked at numerous sites here locally, some in your district, as you know, just trying to, it's a challenge. It absolutely is. But it is absolutely a goal of our organization to have a physical foothold in all areas.
How long, how large of a space do you need if we can help you figure something out?
So, I mean, I don't think we need a ton of space, right? What we need is the ability to do a few things. We have a lot of case managers who work in this area to help whatever the individual's needs are. A place for case managers to meet with families, a small room where we could set up probably a telehealth room because we know people in the community don't have access to high-speed access to internet and video and those types of things, where they could come, meet with somebody either through telehealth types of stuff. Some of those types of things would be really good. One of the things we are doing is if we are having some of our free group type of meetings that we run, we are able to broadcast them from one site to another site so people can participate remotely with those as well. So trying to look at, like, a lot of it is some of the technology stuff that we're looking at and how we can maximize those types of use.
Okay, that's good to know.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
Appreciate it all, thank you for what you know.
All right, we're moving into public comment. During this time, if anybody wishes to speak, please be recognized and come up to the mic and give us your name and the district you're from. I'll stall for time. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, sir.
Hugh Hill, Wakefield District. I've been working with a bunch of different nonprofits, not just Flint Hill. And I'm hearing stuff like this all the time that, you know, I didn't know about, other people didn't know about. Have we ever had a summit with all of these different agencies trying to coordinate and talk about? So if that's something that maybe we should think about, what would be the right route to do that? And who would sponsor and coordinate that? And I hope you'll think about it.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're on public comment. If you wish to speak during public comment? Sure. Just give us your name and your district. Get a knockdown, John.
Knockdown.
I am John Schwab. I'm from the Stonewall Hawthorne District. I'm here speaking on behalf of Castleton Community Volunteer Fire Company, Company Five, commenting on the road signs that are up on Castleton View Road, soliciting comments to the board. So I'll just read a letter that I wrote so I don't forget anything. So on behalf of the fire company, as you know, our station is on Castleton View Road, 593 Castleton View Road. There are two short and twisty sections of Castleton View Road where the signs are located that are unpaved. This stretch of road is our primary route for responding to areas on the southern and western ends of our First Dew by a response box 502, including the stretch of route, which includes the stretch of Route 522 from about Woodville to Boston. It's also the primary route to the station that about half of our active fire and EMS responders have to take when they're responding to get to the station from basically the southern end of Scrabble Road, myself included. I also think that, I think we're the only, one of the companies that's located on a road that's not fully paved. So except for the day or two after a fresh scraping of those sections, the washboarding on these sections, these unpaved sections, the shoulders, makes the, makes this stretch of road really punishing to our apparatus, our aging apparatus, I might add, and its contents. If we're transporting a patient in an ambulance, in some cases, a rough ride can actually be harmful for patients suffering from certain conditions as well as disruptive to the EMS personnel who may be providing care while the vehicle's in motion. Piloting a much heavier and larger engine or tanker, such as the engine that might be carrying 2,500 gallons of water, is not just punishing to the apparatus, but it's treacherous to the operators as well as to any other vehicles that are coming in the opposite direction. Even more important than equipment is the impact on delay in responding. Responding to fire and rescue calls along this road requires that we slow our response to a near crawl in order to operate with due regard for safety as regulations require and as is required by anyone who has taken the emergency vehicle operator's course. When road conditions are snowy or they're excessively muddy, the stretch of road is extremely difficult to navigate safely. Taking the alternate paved route, which is, means going out the other way from our station around to the end of Lormills Road and then back along Scrabble Road can add two to three minutes in response times to certain sections. So these conditions, they also slow the response of our members who need to get, who need to use this route to get to the station from that end of the road, of Scrabble Road, when dispatched. As I mentioned, about half of our active responders come from that area. It's our understanding this stretch of road is on some list for paving, somewhere at VDOT County, not sure. And that, much like the lottery, maybe someday our number will come up. But the timeline is uncertain, so we'd like to make two requests. First of all, is there anything that can be done to accelerate this process? To move this paving project ahead in line of others that might be important but may not be as directly and negatively, that may not as directly and negatively impact the operation of an emergency services agency? We estimate that there's roughly one-half to two-thirds of a mile unpaved road surface. Somebody at the county probably knows the exact distance. A second request is, in the meantime, is it possible to increase the frequency with which the county scrapes this road? Also, again, specifically to maintain these road sections with a little greater priority than other gravel roads in the county that are not the primary route for response to or, you know, to an incident or to the station? And third, we ask that in the event of snow, the entire section of Castleview from Scrabble to the station be a top priority for plowing. So thank you for your consideration of this request and for your continued support of Company Five, its members. And we're happy to serve the community.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. Anyone else public comment? All right, not seeing any hands in the courtroom. Anyone on Zoom wishing to speak, please raise your Zoom hand. All right, not seeing any hands there. I will close public comment.
Madam Chair, I'll put forward a motion to adopt the consent agenda that's presented and posted to Board Docs.
The motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We have two, we have a resolution and a proclamation.
No, it's listed first.
Missy McCool. That's good. All right, this resolution of appreciation for Rappahannock County Recreational Facilities Authority Board Member Melissa J. McCool. Whereas Melissa, Missy McCool, served the citizens of Rappahannock County for six years as a member of the Rappahannock County Recreational Facilities Authority Board. And whereas she dedicated countless hours as a volunteer for the betterment of recreational access for county citizens. And whereas during her tenure on the RCRFA Board, she guided the body serving as its vice chair, often managing and de-escalating the inevitable conflicts with the joining residential landowners. And whereas her dedicated support was especially felt by the community's youth, tennis players, pickleball players, those seeking solitude along the Rush River, and the participants of the annual Fodderback 10K fundraiser race. Now therefore be it resolved that the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors extends its sincerest thanks to Melissa McCool for her generous service on the RCRFA Board and wishes her all of the best in future endeavors. Yet further resolved that this resolution be spread across the minutes of the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors for all citizens to reflect upon the service and accomplishments of this dedicated public servant adopted the 6th day of May, 2024.
You should run for school board.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Thanks, Missy.
Hannah Rogers. This is a proclamation for Older Americans Month. Whereas May is Older Americans Month, a time for us to recognize and honor Rappahannock County's older adults and their immense influence on every facet of American society. And whereas through their wealth of life experience and wisdom, older adults guide our younger generations and carry forward abundant cultural and historical knowledge. And whereas older Americans improve our communities through intergenerational relationships, community service, civic engagement, and many, many other activities. And whereas communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds have the opportunity to participate and live independently. And whereas the Rappahannock County community is well-supported by non-governmental partners, including Aging Together, Rapp at Home, and the Area Agency on Aging led by the ECS. And whereas Rappahannock County must ensure that older Americans have the resources and support needed to stay involved in their communities, reflecting our commitment to inclusivity and connectedness. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors that May 2024 shall be Older Americans Month. This year's theme, Powered by Connection, emphasizes the profound impact of meaningful interactions and social connection on the well-being and health of older adults in our community. Further, we call upon all residents to join us in recognizing the contributions of our older citizens and promoting programs and activities that foster connection, inclusion, and support for older adults, adopted the 6th day of May, 2024.
Thanks a lot.
All right, moving into appointments.
Yes, you have four appointments on the agenda today, each of which would not have to be resolved today, but they're advanced notice and they could be resolved today if you so choose. The first is appointment to the Rappahannock EMS Council, sometimes called REMS. The county has two members serving three-year terms on REMS. Jack Atkins' term will expire on June 7th, 2024. And Lisa Palmer has a term expiring June 5th, 2026. We discussed this, I think, I guess, in 2023 when Ms. Palmer was appointed. REMS staff indicated they prefer representation from each locality to provide diversity among three categories, career representative, volunteer representative, and citizen representative. To provide this diversity, staff recommends the appointment of a career representative. And Ms. Kat Waters has offered to fill that seat if the board is inclined to do so. And I note that Kat actually fills all three of those slots in one way or another in our community. So again, this current term expires June 7th, 2024.
Madam Chair, I'll put forward a motion that we appoint Catherine Waters to represent Rappahannock County on REMS with the term ending June 7th, 2027, and that we waive all informalities with respect to the appointment process.
I'll second.
You have a motion, a second discussion?
Has Mr. Atkins been given the opportunity to respond as to whether he was willing to continue to serve? I know he's been a representative on REMS for, I think, several decades.
I have not reached out to Mr. Atkins to discuss his interest to continue or not.
Well, I have to say that I think that's profoundly unfair and I can't support a different appointment today in light of not giving the interested parties equal time to participate.
Any other discussion?
I think we have the same situation in 2023. And I hope we will put the brakes on this again. And that is no disrespect intended to Ms. Waters, who is a fine individual, but this is no way to make appointments.
So the answer is no, he has not. There's been no discussion with Mr. Atkins?
I have had no conversation with him.
I have had no conversation with Mr. Atkins. I know there was a discussion between myself and Mr. Perry of REMS when he reached out to us to let us know that this cycle was ending. I can't tell you what conversations Mr. Perry has had.
Well, Mr. Atkins' term hasn't expired, right?
No.
So why isn't, who would reach out to?
He might have been copied on the letter that I received saying his term is expiring, but I certainly can't.
I, I mean, I didn't, I didn't know until Ms. Smith asked the question if he had expressed an opinion or not. So we can just wait one more month if he's serving, if he's already on the board and he's going to serve till the expiration of his term in any event, and we can see if he still wants to continue.
So while I, you know, and, and looking at this and the way I see it, Ms. Waters is absolutely an excellent selection to serve on this council. I do agree that respectfully and professionally, perhaps we should, someone who, I don't know whose job that is, should at least gauge broadly that Mr. Atkins is, we'd welcome a break?
Well, we talk a lot about volunteerism, but we need to be cognizant of the way we treat our volunteers.
Okay, I think we, we agree with you. We agree with you. So.
And our board meeting is June 3rd, so we can do that.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I think that would be.
All right.
Great, so I'll, I'll, should I just simply withdraw the motion?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Thanks for your question.
All right, appointment to the Social Services Board. This one is July.
Yes, another out month potential appointment opportunity. As you're aware, the social, local Social Services Board has five members. Ms. Burleson's term ends July 6, 2024. Director Crooks reached out to Ms. Burleson to determine if she has an interest to be reappointed, and the answer is yes. She has submitted a reappointment application, and the board can make that appointment today, or you could direct some other course of action or make the appointment later.
I move that we reappoint Jessica Burleson to the Social Services Board, and it sounds like she was consulted, and she does agree that she wants to continue. So this one should be easy.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
I'm second.
All right, I've got, I don't know. Motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
I, I think we appointed her in July of 2020. Is that correct? I think that was our first person meeting after COVID.
It's possible that this is her first full term. Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, when we were meeting at the school. And she attends the meetings regularly and is an active participant.
She's, she's up here on the chair.
Great.
She's super involved.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
Next is, just gonna, to alert you that Mr. Winger's term on the Lower Ridge Community College Board will be coming to an end June 30th. Mr. Winger has indicated that he is thankful for his opportunity to serve, but is not interested in reappointment. So unless the board members would like me to take a different course, I will place a notice of vacancy in the newspaper, seeking those with interest, and would ask you to reach out to your constituents to see if there's anybody who might be interested in this position.
I know that I've already been contacted by one constituent who'd be a great candidate, so.
I know, I've mentioned it to a couple effects as well.
So does the board want me to spend the money on a notice or?
Well, I don't want to, I don't want to preclude anyone else from rallying their constituent base to apply, so.
Sounds like go ahead and post it.
Okay. And lastly, earlier this, I think this year, last year, the board appointed Mr. Will Lloyd to a partial unexpired term on the Rappahannock County Water and Sewer Authority. That term will come to an end July 31, 2024. Mr. Lloyd has expressed an interest to be reappointed to a full term and has submitted the application form to that end. So if the board would like to take care of this now, you could appoint him to a full term to begin August 1 and end July 31, 2028.
He probably won't vote for me again once I do this, but I'm going to move to appoint Will Lloyd as a citizen representative to the RCWSA to serve a term that begins on August 1, 2024, and ends on July 31, 2028, and waive all informalities with respect to the appointment process, and he's done an awesome job.
I'll second.
Have a motion.
He's done a great job.
Second, any discussion? I agree, I think he's a great addition. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. County construction and renovation projects.
Madam Chair, can we maybe just take a five-minute?
Sure, five-minute break. And renovation projects.
No, I have nothing on that one.
This is.
Oh, that's you? Oh, sorry.
There's a narrative update here. I'm happy to go into any details. There's been incremental progress on each of these. I did add a fourth project. That's the Lichate Pond to Tank Conversion Project. That's one that took forever to get permitted. The tanks were actually delivered last Friday. Weaver Works out of Madison is our contractor, so work is beginning in earnest on that project. Right now, we're trying to fight the rain that is conspiring, I guess, as to get the pond empty.
How big are the tanks?
4,000 gallons each.
Wow.
Gary, could you update us on the porch on the jail?
Yeah, sure. So the Historical Building Envelope Restoration Project, the architect, Doug Harnsberger with Legacy Architects, has been working on the plans for that project. The porch, and I attached a couple of things, the porch on the jail is kind of interesting. This is the existing building based on the laser scanning, which is really pretty neat. So you can see the porch is not centered on the building or the door, and it's really big, and it's wooden, and it's in terrible shape. So it might need to be torn off. It , it, it needs to be turned off and either put back the way it is or something. Now, the foundation of the porch is not terrible, and it looks like it was rebuilt maybe when the, there's a generator was put underneath that porch. I'm not sure when. It's no longer under that porch, but it was hidden under that porch when I showed up here. So the question is, if this needs to be heavily renovated due to rot, what do you do about it? Another interesting thing is that I've asked Racy to come back out and look at the deed records and the property line along here, because it appears that the porch might actually be in the, off the county property. But, but any, there could have been an action anytime in the past that carved it in, and so it just needs that research to look. So Mr. Harnsberger has looked at a couple potential smaller porches to put on that face. He says he prefers the nine-foot version, which is I'm showing right now, and you can see this centers under the window and the door. You can't see in this sketch, but centered on the door. Oops. And then 11-foot version would also not be quite as deep away from the building as the current porch is, and so if there is some conflict with property lines, it would, would not make it worse, would make it better. Now, at one point in time, this is a security door for the jail, so it's a really hefty-duty door. The envelope project would suggest to remove that heavy-duty security door and put in a kind of a standard door. It would still be available for egress, but it's not required for emergency egress of a lot of people who are held in an institutional use. So it no longer needs to be an emergency egress route. So you have some leeway and liberty to change from something that had two stairways and a big porch area to something else. And so he's suggesting a couple smaller options, and anything that is done here would have to go to the ARB, and maybe we'd have to look at it. We are definitely seeking input from the board and community on their thoughts. I do plan to discuss this with Mr. Toll. I asked Mr. Toll if the Historical Society had any historical photos, and we, we got one, which shows this porch there without this stairwell addition. The stairwell addition, I believe, was done when the cells were redone, and so a ton of concrete's been poured inside the jail. I think all that happened at the same time, so it was there, and I think that was in the 50s or so. I'd have to go back and look at those records. So certainly welcome board input on, on that project and any input you might have.
I mean, to me, that door doesn't serve really a useful purpose anymore, other than just being a door. So I would say as inexpensively and simply as we can get it done would, would be my preference.
Yeah, I, I think arguably you don't have to have an exit there. You could put a window back and not have a porch at all, but I think historically it was a door, if you go back in time. And so this project is trying to balance the historical appropriateness of what is there and what, what you do during this phase. If there, these windows that are oversized, those aren't original. They were done when all that jail work was done. There's no thought on staff's part now to try to put those back the way they were historically. There's just an interpretation of that time period. The, some of the security measures might come off. There's like mesh over the bars, so there's, we'd probably make it a little better. A lot of these, these shutters are various materials. Some are plastic junk, others wood. Many of them don't match. You can see, you know, where the lines don't line up. It's very haphazard. And that building is built in 1834, and so it does deserve some respect in the work that's being done. And so the porch that he drew up tries to draw on that, that respect and what the buildings of that day would. I don't know. I'm not an architect.
Interesting. So when do you think that we'll have word from Racy about the porch and where, what, whose property it's on?
So I reached out and asked if they're willing to do this. They've actually split their company in half, the surveying part from the regular part, the engineering part, which still does some surveying. Of course, they did all their base surveying. So my contact says, yeah, we can do that project, and I haven't heard back from him. So I'm not sure if he's got to tell you or not.
Both 11 and 9-foot options, both the same depth.
Yeah, yeah. I can't, I'm sorry, I can't remember the depth. I want to say it's like, it's like 10 feet, and would suggest to go pull back two to eight or something like that. Next time you're down there and you are looking up Porter Street, the kitchen addition is inset from the main jail.
Right.
And you'll see the retaining wall along the sidewalk pretty much aligns with the face of the jail building, putting the porch beyond the face of that retaining wall.
Interesting.
So welcome all input from the board. We won't be ready to bid this probably for another month or so, so this was really just a preview of where we were on this particular project.
Does nine feet translate to more cost-effective, or is it one of those inverse relationships where the smaller?
No, I don't think, I, I think this is probably, it would be a little more material for the 11-foot, but at the end of the day, it probably doesn't make that much.
And this is the one he prefers historic or?
Yeah, yeah. I'm not a, I couldn't tell you if that's appropriate or not.
And the ARB has not heard this yet.
They have not heard this, yeah. And apparently, this little detail on the railing, that was shown on the historical.
Oh, cool.
The historical photo that we have, but it was replaced, not with me.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, was it, what was it? Was it just wood or?
It's just this, apparently, no, I think it was wood, and apparently this is a detail that's picked up on at UVA some. I don't know. Mr. Harnsberger said, oh, yeah, that's a blah, 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 blah.
So, I mean, bottom line is, we just, we want that porch to look decent, just to the extent where.
Yep.
So you have, you have three entrances into Town of Wa, well, four entrances, but from 211, you have three entrances into Town of Washington. You have Warren Ave, you have Mount Salem, and then Main Street Extended. So Mount Salem dumps you right at this building.
Really stands out.
And right now, there's a tree that's in this area that needs to be cut down. It's, you know, long, overstayed its welcome. And there's a retaining wall along this face, which is all broken up, and the whole exposure just looks bad.
Yeah.
So the community can do better than the way it looks right now.
Okay.
Great. Mr. Whitson, I think you said nothing on new commercial activity.
Gary has more to talk about here or not?
No, I'm, well, I'm happy to hit on all those projects if you want to talk about them. The Courthouse Building, as the board is aware, there's been an RFP, there's a review, there's a closed meeting scheduled for today to provide an update to the board on that. The EMS Sheriff Garage Processing Building, the ARB issued the certificate of appropriateness for that, and right now I've had some back and forth with the town on any standards they have to connect to the sewer, which apparently they don't have any standards. So now I'm just trying to get the best as-built information so we can design that connection, because there's one small bathroom and the turnout gear cleaning equipment, so it needs a sewer connection. So we'll get that designed up, get the zoning site plan pulled together, and then we can bid it up. That was it.
All right, Mr. Whitson?
Nothing.
Nothing. General Assembly update?
I did want to point out one additional bill that came to my attention through some email communication that Art had with the local government attorneys. That's HB 650 was approved by the General Assembly, signed by the governor, and it was really focused on solar energy and battery projects, but it also slipped into, I think it's 15.22286 that enables boards to have special exceptions, the clear and unambiguous authority to include period of validity for a special exception or special use permit, where before there was some question of whether ECAs were allowed to do it, the boards weren't, and so now you definitely can. However, there's a small caveat that in the case of residential projects, the period of validity shall be no less than three years. I don't think we have too many special exceptions for residential projects. We consider torstones commercial projects, but you can definitely include a period of validity as a condition on special exceptions starting July 1, and we claim you can do it now. So I thought that was important.
Budget work session, consideration of adoption.
The board has discussed budget a few different times. You've met on the 22nd was your first opportunity to potentially adopt. There were some questions about some potential expenses, and I know that Ms. Smith has had some back and forth with staff to receive some answers to questions. There weren't, there wasn't a request to have people here at this meeting. We're prepared to do whatever the board wants to do. The same adoption scenario resolutions that were presented last time are presented here, and to the extent that you want to adopt one of those, you can, or you can wait. You have meetings scheduled for the 13th and the 15th. Bondi's on vacation. We're not going to bother her, and the state is theoretically going to introduce a budget on the 13th, and it might take till who knows when for us to know what it means to us. So that's where we are.
And once they adopt their budget, is it correct? And once they adopt their budget, is it correct that we have 30 days after that to adopt ours?
Technically, the school budget needs to be adopted by May 15th, the 30 days after the budget breakdown for the schools is made available. And I don't know when that would happen. I assume the Department of Education or whatever they're called.
Yeah, so it used to be a seven-day understanding between the Department of Education and by the time the budget's approved. It has not been less than 15 days at least with the CAL tool ever that happened last year. So they're very meticulous about the four-year releasing allocation rate.
The problem is that the schools become stymied with, and so, and others are as well, potentially, with getting contracts out. So some other localities have adopted budgets and so provided some greater clarity there. And those school districts might be issuing contracts. I don't know how it works relatively. I don't know how they can really advance without having an idea what the state's going to give them. But it becomes pretty difficult if we're pushing into the end of June or middle of June, whenever this CAL tool gets done, plus 30 days to then adopt a budget before Dr. Grimsley can start issuing contracts for staff who want some certainty for where they're going to work next year.
Well, I will go ahead and move to approve the provided budget adoption resolution for Scenario 3. And is the tax rate resolution just keeps it the same?
Let's just do one at a time.
At most, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay.
So just to be clear, Scenario C was?
Three.
Three? C in alpha terms, right?
Supervisor Donahue's Scenario.
That is the version that would provide $9,951,551 to the schools, of which a significant portion is for one-time projects.
That was all quite a thousand. That's a point nine. I'll second.
A motion and a second discussion?
So that's, you all are intending to keep the penny to make it 55 on the general levy? Is that correct?
So this resolution would not require an increase in the real estate tax.
But it's 12 cents.
It's an equalized rate on personal property.
Correct.
And then it's a penny on the fire levy?
No.
No penny on the fire levy?
There's no.
Real estate rate remains unchanged for general and fire levy, assuming you adopt the other resolution.
Yeah.
This budget doesn't require it. Now, I do want to say that the resolution language is written in a way that expects a certain amount of revenue from the state. And so if that doesn't come through, then recognized that you might be drawing or trying to sort that out.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
I mean, I think I'm on the record as saying I can't support any budget that includes an increase on personal property. And I know that you all will say that that's equalized, but we all know that that will affect different brands and kinds of vehicles differently, and that some people will be very heavily impacted. And I just can't support that for reasons I've previously stated.
I'll just say that I think the big ticket for people is, while I agree that on the personal property equalization exercise, some people might see a very small increase in their personal property tax, depending on the vehicle or vehicles they own. I think the big ticket was on the real property side and the potential pressure that would put on folks. And so I want to thank Chair Donahue for figuring out a path forward to avoid the tax increase and making sure the schools are funded at the level they believe they need.
All right, this is a roll call vote. Ms. Comer?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Nay.
Mr. Woodson?
Aye.
Mr. Carney?
Aye.
And I also.
So then you do have a resolution provided relative to the taxes. And as you just covered, the budget requires the adjustment.
I move to approve the provided tax rate resolution that you have before you. Do I need to be more specific? No. Because there's only one provided.
There's only one.
Right. A motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Again, roll call vote. Ms. Comer?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Nay.
Mr. Woodson?
Aye.
Mr. Carney?
Aye.
And I also.
Thanks a lot, Bonnie.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Thanks a lot.
Before we move entirely away from the budget, I do need some direction from the board on the $4,500 each payments that in the budget were thought to be routed through the businesses of Rappahannock for the Farm Tour and Sperry Fest. And then certain board members ask, is there any reason why that can't be a direct payment to those organizations as opposed to running through the businesses of Rappahannock?
I mean, I think it should come directly from the board. And, you know, we see businesses of Rappahannock logos on their materials for those events, which is a nice, well and good thing, but those funds come from the county. And it would be nice if, you know, the county doesn't do a lot of things, we're a small rural county. And it would be nice if the county logo could be on some of the materials for those events as well. I don't know if that's the direction you're looking for.
Well, I agree. I think it should go directly to those, to the Farm Tour.
Sperry Fest.
Sperry Fest. I think it keeps it cleaner. I think it allows them to determine where their needs are, how their needs are best suited, rather than filtering through a third party.
Yeah, I totally agree. Let's give it directly to the people who need it. No need to make it more complicated.
Got it.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Bonnie. All your effort. All right. Dr. Grimsley, I can tell you that I've received feedback on the new SIFT report that you put out, and people thought that it was very helpful. So if not this year, not going next. Where are we? Let's see, Erosion and Sediment Control Ordinance.
Yes. So the state set out 10 years ago to simplify the state code and combine regulations for storm order management and erosion control. And it took them a long time to do that. But they finally have done that, and the new regulations will take effect July 1. And so those new regulations require us to update our local regulations that were adopted to reference the old sections and the old contents of the old sections. So the state developed a model ordinance to help localities update local ordinances. And so I have prepared an ordinance amendment for us that would change our current county Chapter 98, Erosion Sediment Control. Article 1 is all about your agreement with Culpeper Swollen Water Conservation District. That doesn't change. But Article 2 is the whole new ordinance based on the model ordinance from the state. And basically, I've taken what the state has recommended and made it Rappahannock by inserting our community name in a number of places and clarifying a few things relative to enforcement on who's authorized to do what between an inspector and the program administrator. And so it's suggesting to insert a whole new ordinance and basically get rid of all of what was Article 2 that is linked to the old sections of state code, which will no longer exist. They're totally repealing the state code and replacing it, and I'm recommending you do the same thing. I would like to do that in a public hearing at your June meeting so that you can have it adopted for July.
I move to direct staff to advertise the Erosion and Sediment Control Ordinance Amendment for public hearing at the June regularly scheduled Board of Supervisors meeting with the July 1, 2024 effective date.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Generator project.
Okay. So as board is aware, we discussed at your last meeting, the board authorized me to submit a grant for a shelter upgrade project for the elementary school to add a generator to that building. That grant was submitted, so hopefully it will be successful. When I informed you on that, I told you I was also working on a project for the school board office slash garage slash fuel pumps to add generator power to that. We actually started this design when we did the high school generator design, and then it's been set on the side. Recent power issues have thrust it back to the top of the pile. There have been insurance claims at that building because of power irregularities that have taken out our fuel system and some other equipment. And so this project would improve grounding, add surge protection, and add a generator backup so that the gas pumps work all the time. Sheriff uses those, our fire and rescue department uses those, and then the buses, et cetera, all use them. And buses are included in our EOP to get people from here to there if we need them during times of need. And so if the generators, if the power's out and there's no way to get the fuel out of the ground, we could have some big issues. At any rate, it's not a cheap project. Using the same process to buy equipment from the Cooperative Sourcewell Contract, similar Kohler equipment that we purchased and put in place at other places, would be a 50 kW generator and automatic transfer switch, surge protection. That's $54,000. So I've selected a diesel generator for this case, whereas we have a 60 kW propane generator at the sheriff's office, thinking the diesel generator at this location made sense with a large tank of diesel below the ground just across the parking lot.
How logical.
And, you know, if we ever had issues getting fuel, we could get it fueled, for sure. So that seemed to make sense. Installation, I've kind of split this. I've talked to the large company that has installed the high school generator and did work for us here on this campus, who I hope will be interested in the elementary school. They gave me a pretty high price, because I don't think they're really interested in coming out here doing this job. I talked to a local contractor who gave me a pretty good price, a non-binding. And so this $45,000 is kind of in the middle and rounds the project out to $100,000, thinking we should have some leftover, but I can't guarantee that. If the board wants to move forward with this project, I do want to alert you this is not something that we can do tomorrow. My first step would be to order the equipment. And there's 30-week lead time on the generator, 42 weeks on the transfer switch. The market's still really screwed up in this area. It's even longer for the big generator for the elementary schools, should we be successful with that. But if the board wants to move forward, you would have to basically authorize us to create the capital project and then approve a supplemental appropriation from the general fund balance to fund the project. And as soon as it's funded and exists, I'll confirm the equipment specs and get it ordered so we can allow those 30- and 42-week lead times to start ticking away.
So how does this overlay with the grant application?
This is separate site. So this is, the grant application is for the elementary school.
Exclusively.
Exclusively.
And so this one, this generator, will not touch the school? And the grounding and the power surge protection is only for this building?
That's right.
Okay.
Yep. And I don't think we, even though this kind of has a mention in our EOP for transportation and for maybe a backup EOC, I don't think it's eligible for the Shelter Upgrade Assistant Grant Fund.
What happens now when there is no power to that building and you can't get fuel?
Well, we've really had to do. Well, there's some other issues with fuel pumps we've fought with over time. We have a contract now with Qmart, so people can go across the street and pay a lot more per gallon. We've worked through a process with a state vendor, I think it's Mansfield, where there's some fuel purchasing cards that we can get that work at some of our vendors that also has a cost premium. So there's no place better than the fuel depot at the bus garage to get affordable tax-free gas. But we do have backup provisions in place.
To fuel.
To fuel if we have to.
Dr. Grimsley, since you've been at the building, what's the longest amount of time you've not had power in that building?
Well, technically, our pumps are sort of still down. We have to do what we have to do. But the longest we've been, let's say, a couple of days, and we had to move. But just even any amount of time, it's just the damage from the surge is what keeps it going. When power comes back on and is restored and everything, our systems are still down. Problem with the pumps we have now is a company based in Israel, and it is antiquated and is no longer in business. So we can't even get the repair parts we would need to get those up. So it's a whole system upgrade we need there as well. So we've worked through insurance to move that forward, but wait time on all of that as well. So, yeah, we have a different can come out that works specifically on these pumps that help us work around them. And now we're all having to do different accounting procedures just to get the gas out and make sure we're.
The schools have had a very interesting experience here recently that they haven't had in the past with the high school now having a generator. We've had area-wide power outages, and now the high school's powered, the elementary's not powered, the office is not powered. And you can only keep the elementary school kids there so long before you have to get them out of the building because there's no water, there's.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But the high school's there, and so, you know, if we are successful with the elementary school, then you'd have the situation where maybe the schools are powered, but the office is not powered. And there is some synergy that would be gained if all three were powered.
So suppose that the grant application comes through. I can't remember the figure, but that's going to be in other.
That's 160-something, yeah.
And would you say in terms of priorities, they're both next to each other? I mean, this sounds.
I think logistically, the elementary school's a bigger issue. They've taken a lot of damage in the elementary school, too. Part of this basically provides a new service entrance with new surge protection and new grounding that we could maybe do on what's already at the elementary school, but then add the generator to eliminate, to A, provide sheltering, and B, have both schools up so they don't have these decisions of what do we do if one school's powered and the other school's not. The office, I think, if they had to move their office to one of the schools, they could probably figure that out. We just wouldn't have fuel pumps, then we'd have to pay more somewhere else, assuming they're not all without power. So if everybody's out, then we're just hosed. Because you've basically got three other places to get gas. We started to explore the opportunity at the VDOT yard as well as a backup for fuel. But we kind of resolved issues before having to go that far into the bench. They do have a generator.
I know ALS 1400 uses your pumps as the sheriff's office?
Yes.
So it's not just.
At the volunteer company, some of them have asked us whether they're allowed to use it, and the school said, I don't know. What do you think? My response was, they're not part of our organization. That's something you would have to think about, the billing and whatnot, and keeping track of that, whether that makes sense and is legal from taxing and everything else.
There could be a lot of savings there.
There could be, yeah, for some. It doesn't make sense to drive halfway across the country.
I mean, but there are several within, several companies within five minutes.
Yeah, some of them have their own tanks, but.
Well, I'll move to establish an SBO generator project, capital project, and fund the project with a supplemental appropriation of $100,000. I'll second your motion.
All right, you got a motion and a second? Any discussion?
I just, I think these are important projects. The dollar amounts are getting a little daunting.
Unfortunately, it's not going down.
That's why I feel like if we are going to do these things, we have to find a payoff for them, because frankly, we've not ever had this before. And we've managed, for the most part. We had an unfortunate incident with a furry critter. Should an unfortunate incident with a furry critter precipitate $200,000 plus in expenses, that I don't know. And not to say that that's the only problem, but I know it was a big problem, and it impacted working families that had children. working families that had children in the elementary school in a huge way. At the same time, those working families, if they knew the dollar amount of tax to these changes, they might say, "Well, I don't know that it was that much of a problem." So I just hope if we do this, that we do maybe leverage these pumps and allow volunteer companies to begin to use them and establish a way to account for that. So maybe there would be offsetting savings in a different angle.
An updated auditing system would be the first step to that, and I know that they're working on that. I was amazed at the price increases that I saw from the 2020 high school generator project to the elementary project when I priced it out. It's unbelievable.
And that's what I was going to say. The key word used today was antiquated, and so, and that's older than 2020, right? So I worry that sometimes, I agree, we should absolutely figure out a way to maximize cost savings, but I worry if we wait too much longer, this dollar amount will be yet larger.
Mm-hmm. And sitting on the fire levy board, I see these, the companies buy fuel at all different prices, so if there is some economies of size and scale that we can leverage here, that would be amazing.
Yeah, I am aware that volunteer fire companies can purchase off a state contract, so if that's the case, I assume that they could, we could work out the paperwork, but that's an administrative thing.
We talked about it when I was on the fire levy board, and for certain companies, it didn't make any sense, because they were going to be driving a heck of a distance to get fuel to go back.
Absolutely.
But for the ones close to the school, it would make a lot of sense.
Did this go through the public safety committee?
Did this? No, did not.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Speaking of public safety.
Sure. And speaking of the public safety committee, I just wanted to bring everyone's attention to initiatives, one that's somewhat underway and another that I'd like to get underway through the public safety committee, and that'll eventually come back to us, perhaps for funding. The first one, and I would be interested to find out if any of my colleagues have received similar input from their constituents. The first one relates to property, property insurance premiums. And I now have, in the last couple of years, had conversations with two constituents who had a property insurance provider basically telling them that your rates are going to go up because we've decided that you're too far away from a fire station, or there aren't hydrants near you, et cetera. So that's sort of one theme, just to keep in mind for a second. On the second, the second variable here is, of course, the day of the wildfires. And so both of those, both the inquiries from constituents and then the recent wildfire event, one constituent raised with me the idea of trying to put dry hydrants in strategic locations in the county. And I know a little bit, but not much about these, and Mr. Curry and probably others would be better equipped to talk about the feasibility of these. But the concept is you use, you use existing streams, ponds of sufficient volume, and usually with PVC pipe and a non-pressurized system, you create a connection that allows a first responder pumper to connect to that water source. And I think about, wow, you're, you're quick, thank you. So this is, yeah, it's a good picture. So the idea is, what I'd like to do through the public safety committee and through Mr. Stevens and others, and the chiefs in particular, is determine if there might be some locations where we could at least start with something like this.
There are several in the county, and our CAD system has them identified-
That's good.
And mapbooks do. But there are grant funds that can be sought.
Right, and so constituent mine raised, raised the Department of Forestry grant program, and I believe the grant application deadline was March 31st. But, so I think now, in the coming year, I'd really like to think about this, particularly with that wildfire event freshening in our minds. What can we do around the county in a handful of locations that maybe would improve public safety vis-à-vis wildfire events?
So how does that work? Do you seek easements for these? How does it work? I mean, I'm assuming they're all-
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's a right of entry, or it's just a-
Yeah, I have no idea. No idea.
Oh, interesting, because I know that there's one on 522, you know, right there.
Yeah, the pond and elden.
Yeah, they put one in.
And so Richie was, I'm sure, integral in having that happen.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
But that's, that's my question, is that how would, you know, you go about determining, would it be just landowners offering access, or? It's a good idea.
Yeah, I know the fire and rescue has to be able to get to it, and you've got to understand the weight of the vehicle going to the pond, so it's not like your regular dirt entrance that would necessarily, you don't want them getting stuck trying to get water out of your pond, kind of thing, so. But it is, I agree, it's a great plan to have in place.
I just kind of like wanted to plant the seed with you all, and maybe we can dig into it from a public safety committee perspective. And I know that in my district, there, I think of roads like Ridgeview, Grandview, which is above the Covington River. That one might be tough, but it's also an area by Rappahanna County standards, dense population with forested areas, so potentially a risk area. And also where one of the individuals received pushback from a, from a property insurance company. Walnut Grove is another one off of Long Mountain Road, where there are a lot of houses and a lot of, or a number of ponds, so I'd just like to be smart about this and maybe come up with a system. It's good to know that we already have the ones that exist mapped through our CAD system, which is great.
Yeah, so we could get a, we could easily get a map that shows where they are geographically spread out.
Yeah, for the public safety.
But then being one more deliberate on where are there gaps?
Yeah.
And how do we pursue those?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Any comment from the audience?
Sure.
Company one is pursuing a forestry grant, and we're trying to work with the landowners who had ponds and see if they're willing to take it or not.
Oh, good.
So we could, I don't know what the other companies are doing. It could be there more than one roof working on this already.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Is this something that you guys have talked about as the public safety or not?
We haven't, yeah.
Going to move into the next bullet point?
Yeah, so the next bullet point, near and dear my heart, literally and figuratively. So I wish she was still here, but Ms. Waters did a continuing education class, was it last week or the week before? Anyway, my wife, Susan, and I were sort of a case study for part of the continuing ed class. And what Ms. Waters was able to do is she, I secured a recording of the 911 call that my wife placed when I went into cardiac arrest, and a couple of you have heard it. And then I also was able to get copies of the post-in, post-incident reports from the paramedics, which gave a timeline of how everything played out. And so between the audio recording of the 911 call and then the post-incident report, Ms. Waters was able to develop a timeline to show that between the time the 911 call was placed and the time that I was connected to a life pack, which is basically a paramedic defibrillator, is that right? The total time span there was five minutes, which is-
Amazing.
Amazing. So I don't say that with any expectation that that can happen in most places in our county. It could, probably could happen maybe in the town of Washington. It probably could happen on Main Street in Sperryville, but there are very few places in Rappahanna County, given our topographic limitations, where that could happen. And going back to this concept I've talked about previously, this chain of survival, which is a term and a concept that they use in discussing survivability of sudden cardiac arrest. Chain of survival basically goes like this. Someone recognizes somebody's in cardiac arrest, they call for help, they do CPR, hopefully high-quality CPR, and then if one is available, use a defibrillator, and then hopefully a rapid response by basic life support and advanced life support EMS, and then, of course, level-one trauma center type care after the incident. And when that chain of survival is perfect, as it was in my case, of 360,000 sudden cardiac arrest victims in the United States every year, only 10% survive. So the question is, if we know, if we know that our system and our topography limit our ability to get to people in Castleton or Aris Hollow or in areas of Amosville in that critical period of time, what else can we do to, to hopefully allow the 10% of people who do manage to survive cardiac arrest? How do we make sure they do survive with their brains intact? And so to that end, what I am hoping to implement, and I talked about this after I came back from what happened to me, I'd like to have AEDs, automated external defibrillators, in all places in the county that make sense. This would include post offices, churches, major businesses. And then to Mr. Curry's point about the dry hydrants, map the location of those AEDs through our CAD system. Number two, I want to implement a CPR training program that is, is widely available, easily accessible, and doesn't require a lot of time. Because my wife did bystander CPR, everyone said, everyone I've talked to who knows anything about this says that she saved my life and my brain, and she didn't even really know how to do CPR. A dispatcher did help her, which was on the recording, but still she did what she thought she should do. And so to that end, if we can have AEDs distributed and functioning, mapped, maintained, tracked in a centralized and coordinated way, and then we can get as many people in our community trained in CPR as possible, there's software, and there, I believe there are different kinds of software that can be integrated into your dispatch system. One software program is called PulsePoint, and it basically would show all those people who are willing to share their location who are CPR-trained, it would show dispatch where those people are located and where the AEDs are located. So let's say someone on Debbie's road suffers from cardiac arrest, and there's an AED that settles, and Debbie knows how to do CPR, dispatch can connect those, those resources, a CPR-trained person and AED, and bring them together to bridge that potentially long response time that oftentimes we can't avoid because of who we are. So I should also add that I have two families in Rappahanna County who would be willing to put private money into this AED project. And so I think we have the seed money to do it. I know that Mr. Stevens has looked at pricing and has thought about locations, and I believe at our next public safety meeting, he's going to come back with a list of priority locations for AEDs. So this is all to say that we'll likely, as a board, need to decide whether we're going to fund this. Obviously, it's important to me. Obviously, it requires a vote, but because I know that life is expensive for everyone, to the extent that I can bring private citizen contributions to bear on this, I will. To the extent we need to go talk to people to get grant support for this type of program, I will. I'm going to be in Pittsburgh in early June, and the woman who founded the Sudden Cardiac Arrest Foundation is Pittsburgh-based, so I'm going to talk to her to see what resources, financial resources her organization might be able to bring to bear on this project. But I appreciate you indulging me on this, and I, I do think it is potentially a program that, for which we, as a rural community like ours, could be a model for many communities like ours. And I think that we can do it right, and I think we can, and save lives. And thank you.
Neighbors helping neighbors.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay. I know PulsePoint is used in Fairfax, I believe in FAWC here as well, and I've been told that the program works well. Obviously requires connectivity, but I think it's a great, great program.
So what's the cost per AED these days? A couple of years ago, it was about $3,500?
It's under, it's under that now.
Yeah, it's 2,700 or something. And the biggest change that's happened is that they're shelf-stable for like five years now. They don't require constant attention with updating pads and batteries and things, and it makes kind of rural distribution a lot more feasible than it once was. And I just saw a social media post from another county that just had a photograph of one on an exterior park space-
Sure.
In a little cabinet, that it was combination lock, and it's just called 911, and dispatcher will tell you the combination and how to use this thing. And so there are a lot of ways to push these into the community, and I think what Mr. Whitson, you know, is, this concept of having some standardization probably helps. So if the county can assist in that and not having 15 different versions out there, having a version, so when the people talk to a dispatcher, the dispatcher has more confidence to know what they're looking at, what they're doing, what they need to do, and then where they are. There's a lot of that.
And you're, it's interesting, in the last, I think, six months or so, I've seen AEDs start to pop up in places. I don't know why there's more awareness of this, but I know, you know, there's now a really nice unit at the Episcopal Church that I attend across the street, and Dr. Hill put one in at the theater across the street, and then we have one here downstairs that's been there for a while. So, I mean, you know, I think somebody, somebody who suffered cardiac arrest on this street probably is going to stand a better chance than someone back in a hollow somewhere. But if the American Heart Association raises this concept some years ago about the community as the ultimate first responder, and that's, that's ultimately what we're, what we would be doing here, and I think it'd be really an awesome way to help our volunteers and take pressure off of them in the, in the case of a catastrophic incident that for the victim would be life-changing and easily life-ending.
No, I like it. Thank you for your effort.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Yep. Targeting both of these items and for the next public safety committee.
So you'll be talking about this at the next one. So how does PulsePoint work? Is it a, is it a software program that dispatch uses?
Yeah, it's-
Is it?
Well, I've linked it on here.
Yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty neat, actually.
Yep. Yeah. But it's a way of connecting people to-
So it's a, it's a GIS-type-
Yeah.
System hosted online where people are suffering, so they would have this Pulse, someone would have a PulsePoint app, they would get alerted that your neighbor is having an issue.
It says, "Hey, your CPR turned, go to this house."
Here's the AED.
And there's an AED, like, I have an AED at home, Christmas present for my wife. And so, she's really romantic. So, you know, I, I mean, I'd have no problem registering my AED with dispatch, because that means that at least there's one person back in Aris Hollow, who could be dispatch, who knows CPR. Take your AED to this person's house and start working, and our people are on the way. And then the seven or eight minutes that it would take to get back in Aris Hollow from, you know, ALS 1400, for example, someone's there maybe in three. And then you get into that timeframe that I benefited from, which is five.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, thank you for doing the work on this and pushing it.
Well, yeah, no, I'm leaning on others to figure it out, but I'll, I'll gladly be the poster child for this project.
A very effective one.
Yes. I like the concept, certainly. And, yeah, my first question was, well, whose plate does check in the batteries-
Right.
-land on, and how do we, how do we keep that? You know, in a, in a previous life, I taught group fitness classes at a couple of different facilities, and I can tell you, one facility checked their AEDs regularly and is on record as reviving quite a few folks. Another facility went to use theirs, and the batteries were dead.
Ah, that's bad.
So I think that, you know, that's the key. If you're going to start a project like this, if you're going to start an initiative like this-
Yeah.
It is to do it correctly, and then, you know, make sure that it's maintained.
Yep.
So, and then the training is relatively, well, I don't want to say CPR training is easy, it's not easy, but it's- But it's one-day commitment, not even a full day.
From a recruitment and retention for volunteer fire and rescues, it's great to have Ms. Waters be in front of a group, maybe a church, who knows? A congregation, be able to learn CPR and maybe get her hooks in. A couple of people say, hey, have you ever thought about?
Mm-hmm.
I think there's a CPR training coming up at Company Three.
Company Three, on May the 28th.
Each month, there's typically one at one of the companies. Yep. But going to a group is going to be very effective as opposed to saying, come on over to my house or my building, do training. You can go to their building, and that can be very effective.
Yep. And in one of my previous lives as a parish administrator, we, I guess about twelve years ago, put AEDs in the offices and also in the parish hall or sanctuary, because the sanctuary was always open. So it was a great, great asset. Fortunately, no one ever had to use it.
Yeah.
And the AEDs have come a long way.
It may be that we end up plotting the ones we have and just figuring out that what we've got is sufficient. But just the maintenance and the information is the missing piece.
Coordination, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're scattered around.
And I think some localities require their employees to be CPR. I can't remember, don't put me on this, but I think the town of Warrenton, I think all of those, everyone employed by the town of Warrenton must have a CPR certification.
Not a bad idea, particularly when we have somebody on staff who can teach it.
Yeah, you think.
Good point. Well, there's a lot of things we just get a video link for, and do something like that, too. All right, moving into board committee reports. Van recreational facilities authority.
Well, we had an amazing fodder stack, which you participated in.
Oh, wow.
It's true.
All uphill.
It's true.
That's what it gets you.
Thank you for being there.
Yeah, thank you.
And he didn't need an AED, he did well.
You're true, like Johnny Hugue has to know that he's got the ultimate community liaison. You're like...
Yeah, you are embedded.
He shows up everywhere.
And Mr. Whitson, congratulations. While you did it, you completed it. We've had, and Ms. Comer, so, was the first Rappahannock president?
Finisher.
Across the finish line.
She got a plate.
Got the plate.
I hate that Chris is gone, because it's like he kicked up his heels at the end.
Yeah.
That was a great picture, and I understand it was not planned.
That was a good shot, Lou. That'll be an award next year at the Virginia.
The fourth wall, they just want to acknowledge.
He's already moved on, he's like, orange morgues.
But we did have four hundred and fifty-two people sign up, which is by far the largest number that at least Jonathan Moore can remember in the past forty-plus years that it's been done or whatever. We don't have records from the eighties, but seventies. But that is incredible. So we had a fabulous time. And I just wanted to thank everybody for making it happen, especially Jonathan Moore and the board, who just worked tirelessly. I mean, Jonathan does a year.
Oh, my God.
And you need these amazing mirrors, because sometimes you might have rained.
You know, it's like, don't plant your tomatoes, don't talk about the cold weather. We've had really good luck.
Yeah.
So, even though it did rain that morning, but then it burned off.
And we do need to thank the regional jail superintendent.
Gilkerson.
Gilkerson and the...
Major Weaver had the trash picked up.
Yeah, they sent inmates out to pick up trash on the fodder stack, which helps a lot, because it's such a darn beautiful run, and you don't want to see trash.
No.
Yeah, so that was great. So Jeff, did you set a personal record, or?
For the fodder stack.
You finished it.
And the invasive project that you guys are doing along the Thornton and going through the hiking areas, it's beautiful. I had no idea. Somebody posted a picture of all the plants in bloom.
Yeah, so they've been working tirelessly on that. And I have to thank you all for appropriating the money last year to, from the Forest Sustainability Fund, to deal with those ash trees, of which there were so many. And, I mean, it was just walking through a disaster area when you went down there. But we were able to use the money to clean that area up, and people have been volunteering tirelessly down there to eradicate the invasives and to let a lot of what's naturally there grow up, and then to bring in some more natural stuff.
It's beautiful.
It's amazing.
It's cool. And then fishing day.
Yep, there's going to be Free Fishing Day, which will be June 8th, I believe.
It's a Saturday, June 1st.
I think we have a meeting before that, so I can give you an update. But I think it's June 8th, yep. Will be Free Fishing Day, which was a great hit last year.
It is so much fun.
Mr. Whitson and Ms. Donahue, you cooked hot dogs.
I was wrapping the hot dogs, Colonel Jenkins was cooking them.
Mr. Gardner found the fish in Pennsylvania, so these are Keystone State trout.
Oh, so they're going to be harder to catch?
Apparently.
Okay.
Hopefully they're not this big, because they didn't move. Well, that's great. Okay, Public Safety Committee? We didn't...
No, we had a late quarterly meeting.
That's right.
And so we'll have another one in...
Maybe July, somewhere near.
Yeah, maybe July. We'll figure it out.
Planning Commission update?
We did meet. Our updates are embedded in Designing Administrator's Report, but it was an interesting contrast to the month before. We had three BMB applications, and literally no one showed up with a comment. So it was relatively quick meeting.
It's all about location, I guess.
And not telling your neighbors that it's a done deal, and there's nothing they can do about it.
Doesn't go very well.
Were they BMB or tourist homes?
Tourist homes.
Airbnbs.
I was gonna say, wow, we get more bed and breaks.
No, Airbnb, sorry.
Such an old model. Good morning. Did you sleep well?
Fire levy board, did you guys meet?
We did not.
Nope, okay. Moving on to treasurer's reports.
Reports are posted. Any questions?
Still looking strong.
Nothing out of the ordinary that I saw.
No, me neither.
Could you, would you just pull up the... Yeah, exactly.
Wow.
Wow.
So, when you look at that, you really need to be paying attention to the reservation document as well, which I think is shown a lot. One point nine million, maybe? Where you have that broken down. So...
Two point something?
Yeah, two point six, so it's different, you know, carryovers, assigned things. So that money is spoken for, so. Okay. You just allocate another hundred thousand?
And a million of that is envelope.
A million of that is envelope?
Yep.
Well, or some balance. I mean, there's been a little bit for design spend. Yeah, so there's...
It's all going to go to the new porch.
Right. But seriously, when you look at this, you need to think about, you've already designated some of these dollars to do things.
Yep.
Okay.
Review of legal matters.
Let's see, so the motion to expedite was denied by the Court of Appeals. It does appear that there will be a hearing on that in June. That's the Williams appeal. The second Flint Hill case, I haven't heard anything about that. Camperusio case, which is the ENS case, that is mired in family dynamics. And I believe the sister has gained legal control of the property, but does not have physical control of the property. And if you drive by there, it's interesting. And I've instructed county staff to not go on the property.
That's a good idea.
It's not safe. And then regarding the most recent case filed by Mr. Conick, this is regarding the tourist home. It has been referred to insurance, and insurance referred it to legal counsel. And there's, I made an updated note on this this morning. That service was made on May 3rd, but it appears maybe it was made earlier. There's some, it was an irregular service.
It's very strange. Mr. Conick requested a summons be issued by the clerk, which was done on April 2nd.
2nd, 23rd?
And then he took it over to the sheriff's office, thinking he could serve it on me personally. But of course, the rules said you can't do that. So then he asked the sheriff's office to serve it. And he filed it with the sheriff's office on April 19th. Deputy Crystal Jenkins reports that she posted it on the front door of my office on April 23rd, 2024, which was not true. I confirmed with her, she did not post it on my front door on April 23rd. She instead says she placed it in our mailbox in the sheriff's office on the 26th of April, the same day that this return or proof of service was filed in the clerk's office, which is also not true. It didn't show up in our papers until Friday, the 3rd of May. So I communicated, so basically this is invalid service. So I communicated this, these facts to the defense counsel. And I don't know if you've heard back from him, getting daily on email, but I have it yet.
Jeremy did say he wanted to talk to you on the phone.
He wanted to talk to me on the phone.
Yep.
Okay.
During the meeting today.
So I guess, I think the thing that I would say to Jeremy was, call up Mr. Conick and tell him what's happened. People simply agreed to, had agreed to deadline by which we are twenty... See, what happens, we have 21 days to answer this lawsuit.
It wasn't served properly.
And so we cheated out of a week or eight days, right? So of our 21 days that we would need ordinarily have by rule to file an answer or other responsive pleadings to what's alleged to have been sued.
So are you saying that Mr. Conick signed a certificate of service that's not valid and accurate?
No, Mr. Conick didn't have anything to do with that.
Who signed it?
This was signed by Deputy C. Jenkins, the Rappahannock County Sheriff's Office. She's the one who alleged that she personally posted it on the front door of my office, and that's not true. She didn't. She talked to Captain Jones. Captain Jones said, well, put it in his box and say it was posted, and check the posted box. But that's not how you could affect service under the Virginia Code.
Okay, so Mr. Conick's role in this is basically to say that you...
He probably doesn't know anything about it.
Okay, so, but you need his consent to extend the deadline?
Yeah, he probably thinks after having looked at the documents on the court's website that service was affected on the 23rd.
In fact, it was not.
And in fact, it was not.
Okay, I got it now.
So he'd be calendaring our response time based on that.
Based on what was stated?
Based on this return of service, this proof of service.
So you're waiting to get a response back to see if...
I'm assuming that Mr. Capes and Ms. O'Brien will reach out to Mr. Conick, and I will make sure that they do.
Okay, I got it now.
Okay. Building permit report, Designing Administrator Emergency Services. E.D. monthly report, we're seeing Mr. Nesbit this evening?
Yes.
We really did see an uptake on that building report this month.
Yeah, it was a big push.
Been waiting for it.
I will note in that Mr. Jenkins has been supporting more and more building inspections to balance capacities. So I don't know how long that's going to play out, or how we're going to do. I'll have to keep an eye, see whether it can be a temporary thing, or we're going to have to do something different.
All right.
So 11 is the added item of the board members did see. So the after-action report from the Virginia City Government from your extended work session slash retreat is posted. There were recommendations that you discussed during that meeting that probably deserve some discussion for this board at some point in time. So I would ask board members to digest this information. It's available for you and the public. And that you probably want to talk about it at some future meeting. It's an information item on this meeting.
And I know we had asked the county attorney to come up with something wording-wise. It was a van brought up, which was recommended in this report.
This First Amendment public comment scripts. Hart and I talked about that earlier this week a little bit. I think it's in progress.
Yeah, I want to think about that. Because as I understand it, what you want is if someone's just going on and won't stop, even though they've exceeded their allotted time, what is appropriate for the chairman of the board to say to that person to attempt to comply with the rules within the First Amendment? So, and a position on when it's, I'd assume when it's appropriate to call for law enforcement to basically remove somebody from a meeting that is, where a person is being disruptive of a meeting.
I want to see what might, maybe should be said upfront, or what should be in place upfront to manage expectations going into public comment. So everybody knows that they're going to have X number of minutes? Or are there certain things that should be set to set the stage to have effective community input?
I'm also going to recommend to the board, my client, that you adopt the green light, yellow light, red light approach, so that you have a mechanical timer. So it kind of eliminates any sort of subjective, what time is it? So everybody gets their three minutes, or five minutes, or seven, whatever that the board will decide is appropriate for each individual speaker.
Okay.
Yeah, that's pretty simple.
We can do that through board docs we have in the past.
All right. Matters presented by the board, yes. Ms. Comer?
What's going on in Sperryville? Marketplace is opening up more and more, so stop by if you haven't already.
I saw your sister over there. Is she working there?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. She's just hanging out?
She's probably at the Artful Friends Gallery. She does some of those craft sessions there. So you probably, she was probably on her way to one of those booths.
Went in during Sperry Fest, and it was hopping, it was so great to see.
Yeah, it's really great use for a property that we've been concerned about for a long time.
Yep.
Yeah, and I saw Ms. Abdullah yesterday in her shop, and very cool little shop. And then a young woman who lives in Sperryville's got a really great children's clothing store. It's an impressive, it's really an impressive place.
Do you have anything?
I just, I wanted to just express my condolences to former Burks, also known by many of us as Beef, who's the football coach at Rappahannock County High School. His wife, Rachel, died of cancer back in March, I believe. And the memorial service was this past weekend on Red Oak Mountain on H.B. Woods' property. And it was rainy, but lovely. And I just, Beef and Beef now has two very young girls on its own. And it's just a heartbreaking story all around. And Rachel was loved by many people in the county, so.
Thank you. Mr. Carney?
I don't know, I don't have anything.
The only thing I have is I did attend the Five Over Fifty celebration for Steph Ritter that was at Company One. I don't remember what day. It was a busy day. But it was lovely. Lots of people showed up. It was a full room. And Steph had folks speaking very kind words about all the wonderful support and volunteerism and everything. She has been such a huge player in Rappahannock County. And it was nice to see so many people come together and share some love, basically, with Steph. So congratulations, Ms. Ritter.
And I'm sorry, I was...
Sorry, you can't go.
Spoken up because Mr. Winger wasn't here. But I will, I'm just going to toot the horn of Lower Ridge Community College. the horn of Lower Ridge Community College and Rappahannock County students just a little bit. If, I don't know how many of you all have taken the time to read his report. It is quite accurate, but the one thing that I really wanted to draw attention to is come this fall, the high school and the college will be partnering for a trades academy, which is something that Rappahannock High School has been asking for and advocating for since 2017. So that's just a lot of blood, sweat and tears and, you know, it's kind of cool to see it come to fruition because Rappahannock, I have to say, was, you know, a huge player in, in making the college make that happen for them. So I'm excited. I have known about it, but I haven't spoken about it. I don't wanna steal anybody else's thunder, but Dr. Grimsley didn't mention it and then Mr. Wanger isn't here and it's in the report, so, you know, I thought I would mention it.
Those kids will ride over the bus with governor's school kids and it just kind of works, right?
They will ride the bus with the, the Mount Vista kids. They'll have the exact same schedule and the offerings will alternate per semester and at whatever the two schools, Rappahannock and Falkir County Public Schools, will be partnering. So the two, those two school systems are working together to determine the, the classes offered, so, yeah.
Very cool.
Excellent.
And I'll, I'll throw in, it's one more thing, sorry, sorry. I mean, I could go more.
That's usually what I do. I don't have any, we, I do have something.
I know, I could go like, and another thing in this report. It's also because we just voted on the budget and I know that dollars, you know, we need to be so careful with our dollars. This program will cost, they are leveraging some state grant funds, so it will cost the school system nothing really extra. And by partnering with the bus to Mount Vista, it really is a great thing, so I'm excited to see it.
It's great. Thank you.
All right, ready for closed meeting?
Yes.
Sure. Damn, you're so good. It's, it's like the Lord's Prayer. You should just know.
Yeah, peril of sitting to the right of the county administrator.
Commit to memory. I move that Rappahannock, the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors conduct a closed meeting in accordance with Section two, dot two, dash, three, seven, one, one, dot A of the Code of Virginia for the purpose of, one, discussion of the award of a public contract involving expenditure of public funds, including interviews of bidders or offerors, and discussion of these terms or scope of such contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. That's Section two, dot, two, dash, three, seven, one, one, eight, twenty-nine. Subject matter will be a closed meeting, of the closed meeting will be discussion regarding RFP number twenty-four dash zero, zero, one, Architectural and Engineering Services in Support of a New or Expanded Rappahannock County Courthouse.
That was a motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call vote.
Yes, please.
Ms. Comer? Roll call vote.
Oh, aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Carney?
Aye.
And I also.